One thing at a time.
Excuse me.
I was flipping my...
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, pop covered the tab.
You got it, Jamie?
Huh?
You got it on?
Yep.
Just with your credentials, username and password?
Yep.
Oh, I was just gonna check.
Okay, thank you.
Did anybody say, talk about our votes in?
No, he just left them hanging.
Ten minutes?
Each.
Yeah, four years.
Life story.
Right, yep, start from the beginning, wear and wear.
Yes.
I'm Hayden. Are these capitals?
No, go to this network.
ASO student?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's where I thought I was.
Some network issues or...
Connected, said connected.
Laurel's.
We called another tab once.
There it is. All right, oh! Let me type in, uh, symbol, oh, was it there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right there, never mind.
So, did you need this enough?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, so I think you can close another, that first tab.
Sounds good.
Do you know where's the speaker in here again?
Oh, come on.
Okay, that's working.
Did you get it, Stan?
I did, thank you.
Yep.
Kristen might turn her remote earlier, she said be late. She's over here.
Did you get on?
Told me that's after noon, so.
Ah!
So, we could go at five thirty.
Okay.
And Kristen's on remote. She's hoping to stay on till she gets here, she did get on.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Kristen?
Yes, I can.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Maybe.
Something went wrong.
Something went wrong.
Let me know.
I don't want to steal over your shoulder.
You don't have to stay as long as you want. Okay? Okay, okay.
You only need that, you know as much as I know.
Right, yeah, while they're there, so.
Greg, are you on or not yet?
I can film that a little bit.
Are you on? Yep. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So I go.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Um, next we will review our five school board basics, which are put students first.
Follow the law and our own policy.
Respect the chain of command.
Base decision, base decisions on shared objective information.
Operate in the public eye.
Okay. Next, we have our consent items, and Kendra gave us some more bills here.
Public forum, but I don't think we have any one.
Oh, I have that after, I have that after visitor, or consent items. I think so.
It came in two thousand eighteen.
What the world!
We're laughing with you, Laurel. Maybe.
I scrolled down, you scrolled up.
I don't think we have any new stuff.
Right here, eighteen twenty-five.
It says R E C N.
Yep.
Okay, yep. And...
Additional bills were all pretty normal, beginning of the year stuff.
Any other questions on the consent items? While I review the mission statement, at Sibley O'Cheaton Schools, we build partnerships to challenge minds, to invest in the community, and to embrace life. Okay. Back to our consent items. Seeing there's no questions or, um, any comments or anything in regards to the consent items, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
You wanna go to junior high volleyball coach, or? Yeah, Laurel.
She, she, Mrs. Elser is working on it, I think we will, she didn't have it for this one yet, but I think she will.
Okay.
Good question, because that's not far off.
No.
But, I think she will. There's a possibility, we'll put it that way, she is working on.
Okay, all in favor, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those are passed, okay, on to discussion items with our new teacher introductions.
So, I would say the highlight or the most important part of the evening, right, is our new teacher introductions, um, and I told them at the beginning, um, that it's an in-depth process, you each ask three, no, I'm just, three challenging, no, um, yeah.
Cut that back from five.
No, they'll, they'll stand up, they can, I'll let them, kind of popcorn here, stand up, they can explain who they are, what position they're taking, anything else, and, and then we'll go from there, so feel free to start.
I'm Jane Klaaslink, I'm the new middle school P E and technology teacher, and this is my first year teaching.
I'm Destiny Martin, I'm the new middle school, high school, English teacher, this is also my first year teaching, I just graduated back in May, but I'm really excited to be here.
I'm Carly Ward, I'm gonna be teaching second grade, it's gonna be my fifth year teaching, I'm really excited to get in our classroom.
I'm Carly Von Renssels, my first year, I'll be teaching fourth grade, and then assist Mrs. Nagel in high school volleyball.
I'm Abby Payne, I'll be the elementary sped teacher, and, yeah, this is my first year teaching, but I'm very excited to get in and start our new rooms, and, yeah.
Yeah, we're excited for them all, and there are, um, in addition to these, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, we have two others that couldn't be here, but it, there's good reason, they're actually en route, so, um, John and Rose, so Rose is middle school, science, fifth, sixth grade, and John's middle school math, they are en route, and should not here, avoiding travel delays, should arrive in Sioux Falls this evening, and Amos is on the way.
Oh, cool.
Will be on the way to pick them up this evening with arrangements, and be here tomorrow, so, um, yeah, that, we're excited for all of them to be a part of this, so.
Okay, welcome.
Yeah, we also have a couple, a couple more who are not here, uh, but Jessica Peterson is another elementary special education teacher, and Elsa Weiss is returning home and is going to be our elementary music, K six music, so, excited about them as well, just wanted to make note of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Does the board have any comments, Randy?
Have a great year!
Thank you.
Okay, on to review the twenty-five, twenty-six professional development plan.
All right, um, I'm not gonna go through it verbatim, it's kind of listed, and there's nothing to approve here for your information purposes, we have the P D plan and the schedule kind of outlining that, so you guys have a rough idea of that, obviously, as we go through the year, subject to change, and a write-up of the professional development plan, I am gonna maybe pay or draw a little more attention to our welcome back, um, where we're at with that, which is part of our overall plan for the year, we did our new teacher work, um, the beginning stuff, onboarding and insurance and all that last week, and then a day of tools, and we had some additional staff beyond the new teachers and their mentor that were here on the fourteenth, tomorrow's when we kind of kick off all of our stuff with all the staff tomorrow morning, and you can kind of see the activities over the next three days, I wanted to thank those that are partaking, the board, some of your helping out in various ways, and Greg and Jamie with grilling tomorrow and everything, getting that all set up, I think that was received really well, and people are excited for that to happen again this year, and then Wednesday, we are looking at, from three to five, kind of doing our open house slash freshman orientation, at the elementary, a lot of kids go in with their parents, and they get to see their classroom where that's at, and put the stuff in their locker, and make your arrangements for the end of the day on bus, or parents, or whoever's picking you up, high schoolers if, if they come, and middle schoolers as well, kind of get a chance to see where their lockers are at, and get a chance to work on that, and, um, see maybe where they go first hour, if they come like that, come at that time, excuse me, and then freshman orientation, I don't wanna steal Mr. Hertz's thunder, and we might talk about that a little bit later, just real briefly, but they're trying a few, I think, new and cool ideas to kind of freshen that up, and, um, help with that transition and things like that, so that's the big day on Wednesday, then we'll finish Thursday with scheduled training, Friday, staff's free to do whatever, and Monday, a week from today, everyone will be here, or have been here.
May I make a quick comment about the open house, too, we asked that, I mean, it's not gonna be a public open house to show off our building necessarily, we're hoping to do that eventually, but it's a, it's a time for students and families to come and meet teachers, and get familiar with their classrooms, some of those kinds of things, so not, not a construction open house, not a, not a building open house necessarily.
I can add to that, because we are planning to do something informally, once everything's done, kind of a public open house, that if people wanna come through and see, um, that they can, this week would be for like parents and students to come in and get acclimated.
To get ready for school.
Yeah, to get prepared for school.
Not the open house as kind of...
Because now all the spaces will be a hundred percent finished, I'm glad you said that.
Thank you.
We will, I don't have the date, but we're, we're gonna do something informally on a night that the public could come and see the changed spaces at the elementary if they want to, but that's yet to be determined. Thank you for clarifying.
I just didn't wanna get swamped with a bunch of people coming in expecting to see, and have to be the bearer of bad news there, so.
Any other questions for me on that?
Looks like a well-planned out schedule there. Uh, two-minute board policy finance moment.
So, I thought I'd just do as an F Y I, um, on this, and we have enough other things, so I just left it to, um, just kind of talking about this, F Y I, the school activity account, the funding and expenses, and things like that, so our activity account, and I intentionally, I was gonna put this on here, and then I didn't, but in the past, I did that spaghetti gram thing from ISFIS that kind of shows where everything's funded, so I decided, me and Kendra were talking about this, I decided not to put it on here, and to kind of give a quiz, do you remember how do we fund our activity account?
Activity tickets?
Yep, tickets.
Yep, ticket sales, activity tickets or game tickets, yep, admissions, yep. Do we get any state funding for it?
I don't believe so.
No, we do not, and, yeah, I'm glad you said that, so, yeah, funding, activity tickets, you know, admissions, um, donations, if people donate to it, you know, when we get typically fundraisers from like the boosters, or, or the band boosters, I, I should've said the athletic boosters, those type of things, we'll fund that, but it's really things that we take in or raise, you don't, we don't get specifically funding for it, so like when we pay seven dollars to watch a volleyball game, or a football game, right, that's money that goes into that account, um, and we haven't raised that, and just in the last couple of years, as an example, and I was gonna double-check the final numbers, and I didn't get a chance to do that today, but I, I believe last year, we were right at close, if not over twenty-five thousand, just on officials, for the year, okay? That's just one part of our activity account, right? Um, another big expense is, and this is a good thing, I'm not complaining about this, I don't want it to appear that way, but anytime you go to state and paying for like the hotel rooms, and that could be all state for band, or vocal, or, I'm trying to think, the past few years, state for cross-country, or any other event.
Speech.
Speech, yep, if we would have someone to go like that, that would come out of that account, and like I said, those are good things, but they do add up quickly, right, and so, those are all expenses, and those are just a few of the expenses you, I'm listing there, you know, we talk about uniforms and trying to stay on a rotation, and we do, and have a plan, and that's why it's important, the booster sponsoring and helping us support that, so, just kind of pointing that out as, you know, what's happened with different expenses, the last few years, referees, they're not paid great, right, no one goes into it, we got two sitting right here just to make money off that, and so, we've increased that the last few years, but we haven't necessarily increased things on the revenue side, and you know, uniforms aren't getting cheaper, and so, just kind of something to keep in eye of and be aware of, it's not necessarily that that fund is flush with cash, we try and make it to close out the year, and end at least on the positive side, but that's one of those things that is really dependent on, and like I appreciate the band boosters, the things that they pay for, the band, vocal boosters, um, the athletic boosters, and some of the donations they've done, because that, that really makes that account flush, because without that, we would have to make a lot of other concessions, so, just trying to point that out, so, we thank our community for their support.
Okay, we'll move on to our administrative reports, then. Start with Mr. DeZao.
Yeah, thank you, um, just super excited, I know there's gonna be a lot of changes in terms of building projects, um, we introduced five new staff members in the elementary building, and so, um, very fluid as we go here, as we prepare, uh, but super proud of our staff, couldn't be more proud of our staff, from, um, just everybody, all of our teams, the janitorial team, the paraprofessional team, the, the teacher team, the, I mean, just, uh, getting things ready to go, it's starting to look like a school building again, and, and, um, we're getting closer, and we're, full confidence we'll be ready to go, so, um, yeah, just really excited, and I know that's cliche this time of year, but, um, it's palpable, you can feel the excitement building, and it's, it's time to get back into that, that flow, and that, that routine, that schedule again, so, um, the flex day, I've heard nothing but good things from staff, so thank you to the board, and to Superintendent DeZao for implementing that, I think that's been a good fit for us, especially this summer with the uncertainty of some of the things we have going on in the buildings, um, yeah, I don't need to read this word for word, but, um, the P D, we're looking to continue with our MTSS, the state has, uh, put into place legislation, uh, for the math curricular area, that will mirror a lot of the previous legislation that was in place for, um, reading and English language arts, where if a kid is not proficient on two consecutive testing periods, we have to have a intervention plan in place, and provide interventions, and, uh, um, support them to, with an effort to get them to be proficient, and so, um, that will take a little bit more manpower, and kind of transitioning our reading process, uh, over to the math side, and, um, developing our bank of math interventions like we have done, uh, in reading, and, and just supports for students, and so that MTSS process will be key in, in, um, providing those interventions and supports, um, our mentoring program, we will continue to offer in-house, uh, Mr. DeZao talked a little bit about, um, having the A E A come in, we did kind of did our mentoring kickoff on Thursday, um, that was very, very good, um, with the uncertainty from state legislation for the A E A, we were kind of wondering how that might go, their hands are tied a lot into what they can offer, um, but, uh, we were a little bit of guinea pigs there, kind of one of the first ones they implemented it on, and so I felt like it went, went pretty well, so, uh, I've talked about some new staff that we're gonna continue to integrate into the team, um, yeah, and then our open house, like we talked about, for our current students and their families to become familiar with their classroom situation, a chance for teachers to make those familial connections that are so critical to, uh, the support of all of our students, so, yeah, a lot of good stuff going on, and, uh, need to be flexible with each other as we continue to, uh, get, make those preparations for this year, but, uh, we're ready for a good year, so.
So, what was, remind me what the flex day was again, I know we approved that.
So, we, uh, pu- put that into place, that teachers put in one full day, um, either continuously or in increments, and then on the first snow day, our plan is to, uh, forgive that snow day, that that will be, teachers will already have put that time in, and then students will not have to make that day up, is kind of the plan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, yeah, and then if we don't have a snow day, we'll make some concessions there towards the end of the year, on how we do that with teacher contracts and those kind of things, so.
Maybe both of you could speak, or even Ms. Schuler, maybe just a few examples of some of the things that you've seen, so they, they submit a Google form when they're done, whether they do in increments or all at once, either way, but maybe some of the things you've seen up to this point, that they maybe...
Sure.
Worked on?
Yeah, physical room preparations is a big one, um, cleaning, um, arranging the room, uh, that was one of the topics of our mentoring introduction.
Training.
Training, yep, thank you, is optimizing that space, and so, thinking through and planning out every inch of that space to optimize student learning, so, physical space, organization, uh, just planning and preparing curriculum, and lesson plans, and all those things to get ready, and hit the ground running as kids come next week, Monday, um...
Mandatory trainings.
Oh, thank you, yep.
Every, every year, there's a, a good amount of online trainings that, you know, typically teachers would do that here at school, if their rooms and things are set up, so I think some have taken it as opportunity to knock that out, so they can hit the ground running when they're here.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, a lot of room preparation, that's been quite a good line.
A common one, yep, yep, so, giving them time. The biggest request we've had is time, how are we supposed to get all this done, and so, oftentimes, it's been on their time, but now we give them a little bit of...
A little on time.
Yep, so, good question, thanks.
Yeah. Um, a lot to echo from Mr. DeZao, again, super excited, the flex day, great addition, I, I think staff are gonna feel much less overwhelmed, having had kind of a full day under their belt to get what they feel they need to get done, and on their own time, I think that's been an awesome addition, so thank you for that. Uh, just kind of gave a little rundown of upcoming things on my report, so tomorrow, first day, back with all staff, freshman orientation, Mr. DeZao kind of mentioned this, but this year, kind of doing two separate presentations, one for students, and one for parents, and then, while I'm not presenting to them, they'll have time to go to classrooms, um, and meet with teachers, and kind of get expectations from teachers as well, so, last year, we did, all got a presentation from me, parents and students, and then all parents and students went, uh, kind of a mini-schedule, we're gonna split them up this year, so I can kind of give specific information to kids that they need to know, and then specific information to parents that they need to know, so, yep, excited about that, we'll see how it goes. Um, last day to change schedules is August twenty-first, that's a change we made from last year, coming into the, the school year, just lots of changes in that first week when students returned, because our deadline was the third day of school, so students would get back, decide they wanted a schedule change, well, by that point, teachers use the in-service days to create seating charts, and print classroom rosters, and prepare that way, so teachers were having to redo all of that work that they used some of their in-service time for, so we made that change to try to help start the school year with schedules set, and I think that's been really positive, and we've had lots of students come in, uh, you know, throughout the summer, or email myself, or our counselor, Mrs. Ruggles, to make schedule changes, so those are happening, it's not that they can't change schedules, it's just we moved that deadline up, so, excited about that. Homecoming is the fifteenth through the nineteenth, uh, this year, we'll have ten, uh, homecoming court members, five male, five female, uh, the last five years-ish, we've had four years, five years, we've had...
It's been five of each, yeah, sure.
So, transitioning back to five of each, and just recognizing more kids, excited about that, so, professional development, not much to add, the MTSS opportunities, um, we do have teachers covering new curricular areas, so that will be another place they can focus their individual professional development plan goals, and definitely want our new staff that are going through the A E A training to focus their professional development plan goal on that training, the six practices of classroom management and teaching. And, yeah, excited for our partnership with the A E A, really happy with what was presented, and that, that will continue throughout the school year, so.
Yeah, are they gonna be able to follow up later on, do?
Yes, we have them scheduled, sorry to interrupt, but...
Yeah, six or seven times they'll come throughout the first semester.
It's about twice a month, for sure, for their first semester, we didn't wanna overload our teachers, but at the same time, it's valuable enough information, where we wanted to get through it with them, without rushing, but to kind of get them that information so they can apply it and put it in practice.
Yeah, the training is a two-full-day training, but the A E A allowed us to kind of break it up, so we've completed the one full day, and then the second full day, we spread throughout the Wednesday P Ds for the first semester, so, and the A E A is gonna provide some support to come in and do some observation and coaching, along with the training, so.
Yep.
Excited about that. Intervention process will look very similar to last year, state requirement of adding the, that math component, that's something we had already started, Mrs. Schuler, Katie Schroeder led the way there, so feel good about being a little ahead of the curve there, we already have the infrastructure in place to provide those interventions. Um, with success, uh, again, grades five through eleven will have success, something new this year, we're gonna allow seniors to leave the building now that success is at the end of the day again, we're gonna allow them to leave the building if they're in good standing and completing their deadlines that they need to, so they have to be passing their classes and completing the success requirements, and that's something I'll go over with seniors on the first day of school, so, I think they'll be excited about that, um, they'll wanna reward kids for doing the right things, that's part of it, and another part is, we just have a lot of kids that are out of the building already for school-to-career placements and things like that, so, they maybe are working at a place in town, would have to leave that to come back for a twenty-three-minute success, so logistically, it just created some problems as well, so. Uh, excited to be fully staffed, except for one, uh, high school paraprofessional position, so still looking for a special education high school para, but we've shifted some things around, um, that we'll be able to get. What we need covered to start the school year, but we'd still like to have one more paraprofessional, so, we'll keep posting, and hopefully, we, you know, get someone that's interested in taking that position, um, and then excited about our two candidates coming from the Philippines, great that they're gonna be here just in time, I love it, it's perfect. Then at the end, last year, if you remember, the same time, kind of went over some one-hundred percent goals, just wanted to touch base with you on those, so in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had forty-two students fail a class in the fall semester, twenty-nine failed a class in the spring, this past school year, that dropped to thirty and twenty-eight, so again, our, our hundred percent goal was to get that down to zero students failing a class, in a, in a perfect world, that's where we want that number, you know, obviously, things happen, and, and not all kids will pass all their classes, but I am happy to see that trending in the right direction, um, and the majority, just for your information, of those Fs are from freshmen, so that's part of the change, the freshman orientation is to give parents more tools to help bring that number down, so I think some of it is preventable issues that we're just not getting on top of. So, the next piece, uh, was a one-hundred percent growth goal, so from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had eleven and a half percent of students that showed a negative growth, and that's from all math and reading testing, uh, five, fifth through eleventh grade, so the numbers just below that, reading, we went backwards a half a percent, so we had just slightly more students show no growth in reading, but math, we jumped four percent ahead, so really happy with our math growth, um, and then reading, I think there's some things we can look at to continue to shrink that number, ideally, all students show growth from one full school year of education, so that's what we're looking for. And then our last goal was no chronically absent students, the data from twenty-three, twenty-four was seventeen high school students, and nine middle school students would be classified as chronically absent, that number was down to twenty-five through twelve, so a slight improvement there, too, so, again, we'd like that number to be zero, and we're making progress towards that. Then I attached our schedules at the bottom there. Any questions?
So, success is gonna be able to have some, oh, not necessarily tutoring, but time to help students with some...
Yep.
I think that's, from what I heard, that was something that was really missed.
Yeah, so last year, we had one day built in for academic support, this year, we'll have two days for that, so we doubled that.
It won't be every day, then?
Won't be every day. Won't be every day, so one of the pieces of feedback I got on Wednesdays, when we increased the amount of PD time from, you know, a 2:30 dismissal to a 2 o'clock dismissal, that shortened class periods, and then in that same year, we also added Success on Wednesdays, because it previously wasn't on Wednesdays. So, we will transition back to not having Success on Wednesdays to try to maximize the time in class, so you lose a day there, and then we'll still have reading on Mondays, and then community building on Fridays. So, two days a week for academic support, students can go to other teachers if they have questions or need help on assignments, that kind of stuff. Yep.
Thank you, Casey.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead with our superintendent.
Yeah, so highlighting some things specific, you know, within the three-goal areas that we talked about with district literacy and math. Obviously, it's been a lot of time on the beginning-of-the-year staff in-service and structuring, and, you know, supporting our staff and our principals, and Julie's done a great job with that as well, and just the PD schedule overall, and trying to coordinate that with everything, we're still working through some of that, but, yeah, that'll happen as the year gets started. Plans and location for our sped staff and the distribution of students, I know they've been working through that, and that is something they will work through the next few days in allocating that, and especially, I think, excited for what that looks like at the elementary and in their new spaces, and how that can kind of shift things around moving up. I think there's a lot of positives that are going to come from that. In Goal Two, staff retention and engagement, just talking about that PD schedule again, and the thank yous to our staff, this includes, you know, we're looking at getting donuts when we kick things off tomorrow, the board, and we've talked about last year, grilling on the first day, and that was well-received, and we even have a local business in town providing lunch on the second day for staff as well, they stepped up and just said, hey, what can we do, so we're appreciative of that, and some other activities, and a lot of those things are maybe based on conversations, maybe an employee had with one of the principals or Julie or something like that, and, you know, some things are doable and some things maybe aren't, but, you know, just trying to incorporate those as best we can. Just about hiring and filling all the positions, as I think Casey's hitting his, everything's filled but a para and position at the high school, but really, in all three buildings, that's probably the positions we're short in. We have all the teaching positions, and I don't say that lightly, you know, we've been years where we haven't had that, and we have area schools that are short in those areas, so I'm very thankful and blessed for that. Just working with the principals, and I know they're going to start meeting with their BLT teams and just talk through some of those things, and some of the changes, as an example, what Mr. Hertz was just talking about, success, some of that came up through conversations with staff and the BLT and feedback, and there's, sometimes there's things we can't implement and change, sometimes there's things we can't, but hopefully, if they bring that in a positive way and just talk that through, then we can work those changes in, but when you grumble and you don't bring that up to administration, it's kind of hard to address those things, so we thank staff for doing that. And just working on the in-service schedule to better support our new staff. Mr. DeZale talked about that a lot, with some of the things, and how just even the two full days of training, how can we get that without overwhelming them for two full days of training, back-to-back, and so just looking and talking through that, so. The financial instability, a lot of the time recently has been spending time with SiteLogic and all other parts of the construction project, to finish that up and wrap those things up. Spent the month attending conferences like SAI and RSAI for my own professional development support, and starting on some projections for the end-of-the-year things, from wrapping up last year, getting estimates for where we're at and where our indicators are for this coming year. We began work on, with Kendra and I, about line item budgets and just getting that done a little bit sooner than we have in the past, I think, working together enough now, trying to gain some efficiencies and do that together, working on finalizing preparations for our voted PEPOL, reminder, that is on September 9th. And those conversations with the county auditor, I believe, the week of the, this week, or next week's paper, is when the initial ballot will appear with the auditor, and I'll send stuff out to staff, and we'll put some stuff in the paper from the schools while that day. And just some other additional things of note, the staff has really been flexible, and we're going to ask for more flexibility tomorrow, because we know not everything will be done, but overall, it's been very positive, so I want to thank our staff for doing that, and I want to do a shout-out to our custodians and our tech department. There's many people that have worked hard, but they have all had really challenging summers and a lot to do, and they can make great plans for a week, and then something changes, and they have to do it differently, and then computers don't arrive on time, and then you have to clean this room that you just cleaned, so the tech staff and our custodial staff has put in a lot of effort, so I'm really thankful for what they've done, and just talking through also as well with some of the board members here, we have elections this fall, and just making people aware of that, and things that we post on social media, just to make the general public aware.
Any questions?
How do you think Psychologic and LNL and all that has worked against on the project as a whole?
From my perspective, I think it's gone very well. Me and Kent were just talking about, it was just the two of us before here, and actually, I think some, I won't speak for anyone else, but I think some have said that they kind of wish they would have had LNL or Story as their general contractor for their projects, some other districts that don't have them, so I take that as a positive, that they have a good reputation, and I think it's gone well, yes, it's not been perfect, but I think they've done a good job of managing for it, and they've been good to work with, and, yeah, there's been some hiccups here, and you're going to have projects, problems in every project with some subs, and they've been the ones dealing with that, so I've been pleased with it, I have, you know, if you guys, you haven't dealt with it as much, but from what you've seen.
I've been extremely pleased, and just would echo what Mr. DeZale said in talking to some other local schools.
Can I push back another week?
Well, yes, 100% that, but just hearing some things, it's like, I feel very blessed, fortunate to work with the crew that we have, like, they're, we don't have some of the issues that I've heard that's happening at multiple other schools, so, very, very grateful.
Some of the stories we heard when we were down at...
Yeah.
SAI.
Yeah.
Going, oh.
Both with general, but also with subcontractors and everything, I just, I just think everything's been really, really good. Not without its hiccups, but been very good.
Board committees.
Sorry, yes, none of them have met, yeah, they haven't, I think, for the most part, the board's been updated on things recently, and, yeah, haven't had any to meet.
So, we can move on to recognition of excellence.
Would you be willing to do this, Casey? Yep. To start here, I want to recognize two staff members with perfect attendance for the 24-25 school year, that's Ryan Wiersma and Rebecca Fink, so congratulations to them, that's a pretty impressive accomplishment. A lot of work goes into getting prepared for the start of the school year, there are often many people who do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that goes unrecognized, or others are not aware of what they do. We would like to recognize and thank the following staff members as we prepare for the start of the school year, Chrissy Ackerman, Twyla Hinstra, Amy Dykstra, Amber Voss, Jennifer Bruxford, Lori Krybrink, Amy Elser, Ashley Hench, for their work to get students registered and collecting all the required documents and paperwork for registration. Also want to thank custodial staff for their work preparing the building, and a thank you to Tony and Stacy for their work preparing all of the building's technology needs and working to prepare all the new Chromebooks and VIVI boxes.
We'll move on to new business and consider approval of new contracts.
So, yeah, it looks like there's a lot of them on there, and there are, remember, some of them are mentors, and ideally, we would have done that earlier, but with a lot of things happening and speaking with staff, we kind of intentionally waited on some of that stuff, so the mentors are, just as a reminder, as part of our TLC program, there's someone that has to be in our district and has multiple years of experience, and then they get paired with a new staff member who's in their first or second year, or we could have a staff member that's new to us, they might have more than two years of experience, but maybe it's a new content area for them that we want them to have additional support in. If we had someone come to us new, but they have like 10 years of teaching, we're probably not putting them in the mentoring program, but especially for newer staff members or younger that have a new content area, we'll put in that, and so these are the mentors that have agreed to that, and then we have some additional supplemental contracts on there as well. We have a few to fill specifically for this fall, they weren't ready to go for tonight, but Mrs. Elser's been working on that with the help of some others, so I think we'll get everything filled for this fall.
Make a motion to approve new contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is passed. Consider letting bids, or consider bids for snow removal.
So, the three-year contract was up after this last school year, this is not approving bids, this is, we need to have approval to let them out, we will advertise that, and then in the attachment, you can see there's a due date that those that are interested will submit bids by, and then we would approve them at the board meeting after that. So, really, all we're asking for you to approve is for us to advertise, to let out for bids, and we'd look to do that as a three-year...
Contract.
Yeah, three-year contract again.
Okay, let somebody make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to consider letting bids for snow removal.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is passed. Consider approval of payments to SiteLogic.
Yeah, and you can see the payments to SiteLogic right there are attached, I'm pretty familiar with it. Remember, at this point, they're smaller because we've been paying things throughout the year, right?
Right.
Make a motion to approve payments to SiteLogic as listed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. Consider approval of LNL Builders Pay Application Number Four.
Yeah, and that's attached for the pay app, and this is for...
The elementary.
The ele, thank you, I'm looking at the attachment only, and so the amount of this one is, this building is, this pay app is for $923,839.85. $923, did I say that?
Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the LNL Builders Pay Application Number Four for the elementary for the amount of $923,839.85.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And that is passed, and I managed to... Um, approve the application for, or the pay application for the middle school project.
And that one is a smaller amount, the invoice is attached, for $308,170.31, smaller, substantially more percentage of the project is complete over here, and less work going on right now, hence the smaller amount.
Did I get that again? I think so. Yep, I, okay, does it seem different? Okay, so is there, are there any questions?
So, how many more payments are left than after, after the...
Um, we would, well, for sure, for sure, because there's going to be work occurring after this board meeting, for sure have stuff going in to the next meeting, and then after that would be, if there's any work that appears after that, that wasn't billed, or anything that was withheld, the retainage is 5%, if I remember right, and that would be held out till we know everything's substantially completed.
Yeah, so are we watching that, or SiteLogic watching that?
SiteLogic does, yep, yep.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Payments LNL Builders Pay Application Number Three, the amount of $308,170.31.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. Consider approval of copier-lease bid.
So, didn't get, we were not ready for this in the July meeting, and I didn't feel the time, based on the information, we needed to do a special board meeting just for this, so the current three-year copier lease is up and about to expire, and our tech director put this out for bids, and the quotes are attached, and here's a simple summary of it, and I do have them attached, but Access Systems was a little over 19 grand, almost 20, A and B Systems, their primary option would have been 28 grand, and Marco, which is our current supplier, is $18,475, and then at the bottom, I kind of explained that, but that's the one we're recommending and using here, it's recommended to approve the 36-month lease with the PaperCut Print Management Software for a total of $18,057, and then that's the lease breakdown plus the PaperCut Management Software, and that's how we get the totals, so, that's the one we're recommending for approval, to go with Marco.
Okay. Is there any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the copier-lease bid with Marco.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is passed, okay.
So, the next item we will, we would need to go into closed session for, before we do so, if anyone needs to use the restroom and wants to do that before we go into closed session, we should do that now, otherwise, once we're in closed session, we need to stay in the room till it's done.
That's the only reason we don't want this.
Yes, correct, so, and Mr. Hertz would need to stay in here, and I think...
I might hold that up.
Yeah, we'll take care of that now, and I'm going to shut the screen off.